Can you take seat councillors? I'm gonna, it's time. Take seats please. Good evening councillors, ladies and gentlemen. I'm councillor Mohammed Ayew, Chair of Traffic Management Subcommittee. I would like to welcome you to tonight's meeting. The councillors are now required to attend in person following the expiry of coronavirus Act regulation which permitted online meetings. We are now meeting in strictly social distancing layout in the civic chambers with a small number of seats provided for the press and public, including five public speaking this evening. We will be using new equipment connecting to the chambers in Microsoft Teams meeting. There is a live stream available through the Teams and recording of the meeting will be uploaded to the website afterwards. Councillor Deween is unable to take part in the meeting in person this evening. Will hopefully be joining us remotely. Thank you. I'll begin with the first item, declaration of interest. Do we have any? No. Minutes of the previous meeting which was held on the 13th of January 2022 cannot take these as correct minutes. And item three, we have questions from member of public and councillors. So we have the first question which is from, taking it from a member of public. Can I ask Sarah Britton-Jones to come to the chair please? Yes. Good evening, welcome. And you have five minutes please.
Thank you Chair. So thank you for allowing me to ask my question this evening. My question relates to the recent statutory consultation for parking changes on the Mount and Redlands. I see from Appendix 1 that consultation responses have been apparently retrospectively categorised as clearly self-identifying as a resident, clearly self-identifying as a visitor/friend of resident, not clearly self-identifying themselves as resident/visitor/friend of resident, or clearly self-identifying as a visitor to part of a local business. Yet respondents were not asked or required to clearly self-identify anything except for support or object. Responses and agenda item 5, 4.6 states that statutory consultations are open for anyone considered to be impacted to respond, meaning that respondents' address and other personal information is irrelevant. Under data protection law, capturing this information is not necessary and therefore not a requirement for the response. Yet, item 4.7 states that officers have been asked to categorise these responses as best they can. I would like to know, what were the circumstances that led to the decision to ask officers to categorise these responses? In particular, what prompted this decision and what was the purpose of categorising them in this way? And the main reason that I ask this is that in November residents were, some residents were sent information from Nikki Hayward, one of the residents of the Mount, explaining that if the consultation did not go the way of supporters, that a councillor would speak to officers and ask them to segment the responses to add weighting to those of residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Jones. My apologies, I wish to have said this question is on the Mount. And before I move to councillor, Tony Page, Lead Councillor of Member, could you please provide a response on my behalf?
Can I thank Ms Britton-Jones for her question? The volume of feedback that we have received to the proposed changes to parking restrictions on the Mount has significantly exceeded expectations. At the time of writing, we've received 1,121 responses. As it became clear during the consultation that there was going to be a high number of responses, officers were asked by me to consider categorisation, which will of course rely on a level of interpretation. Categorising responses is helpful toward councillors to understand the views of local stakeholders and the relevant strength of feeling in the area. However, subcategorisation does not make any groups of respondents more advantageous than any other, nor does it affect the decision-making process. I refer Ms Britton-Jones to the covering report for this item in the papers this evening, where officers have made clear the purpose of a statutory consultation and why address information is not required nor requested. The objections table contains a total of responses as well as subtotals per category. I must stress that this process is not a vote or referendum whereby a decision is made on the basis of the balance between objectors or supporters of a proposal. The statutory process requires the Subcommittee to consider the reasons for the objections being made from whomsoever received. Officers report all comments submitted during the statutory consultation, whether made in support or against proposed changes. The Subcommittee will then take all relevant considerations into account irrespective of who made them. No one who commented or wanted to comment on the proposals has been deprived of the right to be heard. The consultation was carried out within the statutory requirements and there has been no procedural impropriety or unfairness on the part of the council. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor Page. Do you have a supplementary to us relating to?
Thank you councillor Page for your response, I appreciate it. I think, I'm just looking at the responses here in front of me and I see that there's an awful lot of responses that clearly state that they are a friend of a resident and nothing else. So number 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, as a friend of residence, I fully support the residence. As a friend of residence, I fully support the residence. I think to me, that suggests that the people submitting these responses knew that the data was going to be segmented in this way and this is why I've asked the question. I guess the other thing is, if it doesn't matter, then why has it been done? So if it's not going to affect the decision-making?
Could you please ask the question? This is, you're already taking, could you ask the question directly? What is your question?
Sure, do you mean the first question or this?
You are asking a supplementary question regarding to this?
The supplementary question.
Yeah, it should be regarding to this, so could you just ask the question?
Sure, yeah, yeah, thank you. The supplementary question is, if the segmentation of categorisation, subcategorisation is not part of the decision-making process for councillors, why has it been done?
I haven't said that this is part, it is part of the decision-making process, but it is clearly in the interests of discussion that we will be having very shortly for members of the Subcommittee to have an indication of local residents' feelings as well as other stakeholders and non-residents who are entitled to comment. And that is all that the exercise has done. And it is in the interests of clarity of decision-making that we will, that we are required to undertake. And that was the sole purpose in the subcategorisation. There is nothing sinister about it, it is to help us in taking forward the discussion about the proposals.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Page. Thank you for coming in to ask questions, Sarah Jones. Next question I have is from the councillors. The first question is from councillor, can I call councillor Sophie James to the, please come in? And the first question is speeding in Cates Grove.
Thank you Chair. Good evening councillors, what a strange thing to be on this side of the room. Councillor Tony Page, is the Lead Councillor for Strategic Environment Planning and Transport aware that councillor Challenger and I have been in consultation with residents on two Cates Grove streets about speeding and we'd like to request support from RBC to tackle the issues? By way of background, Alpine and Highgrove streets experienced a number of issues with drivers regularly breaking the speed limit. Alpine Street is frequently used as a cut-through to avoid traffic on Southampton Street and the IDR. The road features two particularly dangerous brine spots and it's a very steep hill. Residents on Alpine Street were in favour of a 20 mile per hour speed limit enforcement with several bringing up speed bumps as a follow-up close second. Residents also suggested speed cameras as enforcement and I'm conscious that whilst this is handled by the police predominantly, that the Redlands Safer Neighbourhoods Forum have managed to use handhelds and stop and advise drivers. The majority of residents on Alpine did not want chicanes due to the parking or a one-way system as it may restrict their access to enter or leave their homes. However, two did mention that a one-way, if enforced, should move from Elga Road to Southampton Street as opposed to one in the other direction, but this was a controversial choice and the vast majority didn't favour this. Highgrove Street had seasonal issues which worsened over the summer on predominantly bikes and scooters, but also car drivers' speed on the streets. Residents were once again in favour of a 20 mile per hour speed limit with some highlighting speed bumps. They were not keen on chicanes and one resident mentioned splitting the street in half, that this could cause issues with a turning circle and access. We therefore request that Traffic Management Subcommittee considers changing the speed limit on Alpine and Highgrove Street to 20 miles per hour and explores the introduction of speed humps or other traffic calming measures on both streets.
Thank you. Could I invite Lead Councillor for Transport and Planning, councillor Page, to respond on my behalf please?
Chair, can I thank councillor James for her question? I understand the concerns that have been raised and I thank her and councillor Challenger for putting forward some considered options for addressing the problems. I would like to draw your attention to the item that appears later on tonight's agenda called requests for traffic management measures. This report captures requests for change such as those requested for Alpine Street and Highgrove Street. It is a reference point when opportunities for funding arise, be that through developer contributions, government grants or other sources. Each item has some high-level officer commentary. The request for 20 mile per hour on Highgrove Street is already on the principal list, Appendix 3, item 32, on page 217. Following your request for Alpine Street, the Subcommittee will later be asked to consider the officer recommendation to add the 20 mph request to the principal list. Alpine Street has been captured in Appendix 1, item 2, on page 203. As you have rightly pointed out, 20 mile per hour zone restrictions must have appropriate physical traffic calming features such as speed humps to facilitate compliance. The suggestions raised in your question seem entirely sensible when considering the nature of these streets and will be taken forward in any future work.
Councillor James, do you have a supplementary?
No, thank you Chair and thank you to councillor Page for that.
Thank you for coming in. Right, question two is from councillor Whitten, enforcement of permit parking zone. Councillor Whitten, do you want to ask the question?
Thank you Chair. Green councillors are being contacted by residents recently complaining that there are many cars in their permit parking road without a permit at times of the day when you need one. Please can the Lead Councillor confirm how many full-time equivalent traffic wardens we currently have in the town and what the peak number we previously had was? Can the Lead Councillor also confirm how money from permit parking zones has been used to improve enforcement of permit parking zones in the last year? Thank you.
Thank you. Could I ask the Lead Councillor, Tony Page, to respond on my behalf please?
Can I thank councillor Whitten for his question? The current number of civil enforcement officers is 37 and the lowest number of CEOs was 31 in 2014. The current daily deployment of CEOs is between 19 to 23 per day. They will be enforcing restrictions across the borough and are not individually assigned to specific roles. The permit fees are used to contribute to a range of permit-related areas including support staff, specific software, web and transaction services, production and postage of permits and contributions to enforcement personnel.
Thank you councillor. Do you have a supplementary recording?
Yes, please. Thank you for your answer. So is the 37 that there currently are, is that the peak highest number there's ever been? Or did it used to be higher?
Councillor Page?
Well, Chair, in my many years on the authority, I'm afraid I don't carry in my head the number of CEOs we have employed. My understanding is that this is very much the highest number that we've had, but I'm happy to ask officers to look back over the last decade or so, but I'm not willing to ask them to go and to look at figures from the, from earlier times. The point I would make is that our residents' parking schemes have grown in number and therefore the number of enforcement officers required to enforce them has also grown. So it's not as though we've had a stable number of permit zones throughout that period and other pressures around the town centre and enforcement also lead to increases or decreases. So I hope that's of assistance and I'll have a word with Mr Pennman and also Liz Robertson, the Head of Parking Services and get a bit more additional information to you.
Thank you councillor Page. The next question I have is from councillor Whitten. Question three is regarding Palmer Park to Woodley Town Centre Activity Travel Scheme. Councillor Whitten?
Thank you Chair. Green councillors support improving walking and cycling. A number of residents have contacted Green councillors with concerns about changes to Culver Lane as part of Wokingham's Active Travel Scheme connecting Palmer Park to Woodley Town Centre. Please can the Lead Councillor confirm if Reading Transport Planers responded to the recent consultation and summarise what they said? Thank you.
Chair, can I thank councillor Whitten for his question? Officers are involved in ongoing discussions with officers at Wokingham as this scheme is being developed. In general, we're very supportive of the objectives of the scheme to increase levels of walking and cycling. However, further detailed discussions will be required to refine the proposals as set out within the recent public consultation. Officers have previously raised with Wokingham Borough the issue of how the scheme connects into Reading at Palmer Park Avenue. As the final few metres of the scheme are within Reading Borough Council's boundary, there will need to be further engagement and discussion with Wokingham as it will need our agreement and a traffic regulation order to be made before any changes can be made. These will be reported back to a future committee for comment and approval.
Thank you councillor Whitten, do you have a supplementary? Thank you. All right, I saw all the questions. So the next item we have, item four on the agenda is petition, we have none. All right. And we'll move to item five. Now, this is waiting restriction review. Before I move on to this, I would just like to say, I'm going to ask, because I've got quite a few speakers here on the Mount and publicly, I don't want to take too much because I've got a quite hefty agenda there, I don't want to keep them waiting. So I'm going to ask Mr James Pennman to introduce the, and then I will take the speakers turn by turn.
Thank you Chair. So following January's Subcommittee meeting, we've conducted a statutory consultation on these schemes that were agreed to be included in the programme. So we've conducted those and members are asked to make a decision tonight on the items that have come back with feedback on whether they be implemented or not. So these are in Appendix 1 and Appendix 2 contains a scheme in Norcutt Road which was included in the same consultation and that linked to implementation of new zebra crossing. And then Appendix 3 is the list of schemes for potential inclusion in the next review programme. And again, members are asked to agree whether they be taken forward to investigation or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Penn. Can I, can I call Stuart Singleton White to the chair please, if you want to speak on? Yeah, right, sir.
Thank you very much Chair.
You have five minutes between you two to speak on this item, I just want to make it clear and when it's coming near to the end, I will remind you.
Thank you very much Chair and thank you to all the councillors for allowing us to speak this evening. I'm going to start by handing over to my neighbour, Paul, who's just going to talk a little bit about the further work on the data that we submitted to the last meeting and which councillor Page asked us to continue to collect. So Paul, would you like to go first?
Thank you Chair. So thank you Chair for allowing me to speak against the parking changes. I've been a Mount resident for about 19 years, living on both north and south side of the Mount and during this time I've always been able to park without a problem. At the last, at the last meeting, we gathered, we presented data that we gathered by a group of local residents that showed overwhelmingly that there isn't a parking problem in the Mount. At the last meeting councillor Page asked us to continue with that survey and we've done that. And basically the results are now taken over 142 days, show that during the period, on average, there were 27 parking spaces available during, on each of the days. The surveys were done at different times and basically we thought we'd look specifically at data that, a time of data that covers the evening. So 60% of the surveys were done between 6:00 and 8:00pm and on average during those times, there were 26 spaces available to park within the Mount. Thankfully, the majority of votes are to object against the changes, but hopefully the committee will acknowledge that there isn't actually a parking issue within the Mount and you'll vote against these changes. Thanks.
Thanks Paul. So I'd like to start by thanking the officers for all the hard work that they've done in pulling this data and the responses together. As councillor Page has noted, it's probably way beyond the number of responses that would normally be expected for a traffic management issue and it just is a good indication of the level of concern about the proposals that were put, put out to consultation. I also welcome councillor Page's comments about the categorisation of the data. It did cause us some concern as to how they were done. We were not asked to self-identify whether we were residents or neighbours within the consultation. I for one responded to the consultation as a resident of the Mount for over 21 years and I did not indicate that I was a resident because I wasn't asked to. So it's good to note those comments. I'd also just like to briefly mention about section 8.2 of the report, which makes reference to the Disability Discrimination Act of 2010 or the Equalities Act of 2010. The report says this is not an issue for consideration under this proposal, under agenda item 5. I would just like to suggest that in my view, in the case of the Mount, it actually is a material consideration. The 2010 Act lists 10 protected groups, two of which are the elderly and the disabled, both of whom are regular users of the Mount, of the Mount and particularly of the Progress Theatre and would be requiring parking in order to access that facility. I'd also like to make a couple of comments on the issues raised by the process so far. A number of those supporting the scheme said that only two households had objected to the idea of changes within the Mount and had claimed support of between 83% and 91%. These results were based on self-selecting polls in which a large number of residents did not take part. I am grateful to the committee that the council survey has shown that these claims of overwhelming support are not supported by the evidence presented to you this evening and even by those who are self-identifying as residents of the Mount. In fact, I note of the 103 people who said they support the scheme, more than 50 of them were of exactly the same text that had been submitted. I also note that in supporting the, the supporters of the scheme have claimed about the restrictions in other parts of Zone 15R. But I wish to bring to the committee's attention two important points here. Firstly, that Marlborough Avenue listed in the, by the supporters, has in recent times downgraded its scheme and removed its night time restrictions as they thought it was too draconian. Meanwhile, Sintra Court has introduced a residents-only requirement. This shows that within the 15R zone, there are a range of schemes and restrictions. These have not had a major impact on the Mount and nor have they caused confusion to the traffic officers asked to police these schemes. I'd like to comment as well on the wider implications of the scheme.
You have 10 seconds to go.
10 seconds, okay. I do, I do believe that it runs counter to your cultural and heritage strategy and it would concern me that the pressure on the Mount would jeopardise the city status bid for Reading. In closing, I'd like to make it clear that the Mount is a wonderful place to live, is an active community, we support each other with a good neighbourhood watch scheme, an active WhatsApp group, a community garden.
Thank you Mr White, your time's, I'm sorry, is up five minutes, so I'll have to stop you there. Could you stay in your seat? I just want to ask, any councillors wants to ask any questions? Committee wants to ask? Councillor Page?
Just going to ask if you could, if there's any chance of you letting us have a summary of the, the survey. You rattled off some information there, Mr Bennett, but if you could share that with us.
Yeah, of course, we, my wife sent through the, the whole list of data, but I can cut it out and make sure that the evening?
When, today?
No, no.
In the consultation.
As part of the consultation, we reissued the new set of data, so you should have it all.
Right, okay, thank you.
But we can resubmit it as well councillor Page, if you wish.
Right, Mr White, thank you very much for coming. I can ask you to take a seat and I'll call the next caller.
Okay, thank you Chair, thank you.
Can I ask the next speaker, Nikki Hayward, to come to the chair please to speak?
Thank you Chair.
You have five minutes.
I've got bullet points of my, of the points we're going to make, if anybody wants one, please do help yourself. I'm here tonight to speak for 21 households to ask this committee to approve this proposal. We urge the committee to place more weight on respondents within association with the area, residents and friends and family of residents on which these proposals would succeed, with 99 supportive responses to 37 objections, which is 63% support. Last year, residents voted by 83% online to ask the council what our options were and then by 91% by physical poll, which went to every single house, so it is incorrect to say it was self-selecting, to approve the one proposal that highways put forward for us. Those responses were provided to the committee and they were all signed by each household, so they were verified responses. Residents would like to note our concerns about this public consultation process because it allowed anyone to respond anonymously, as many times as they wanted, to self-identify and was particularly vulnerable to botting. Councillors should note the sheer scale of the responses we're talking about, which is 1,000 objections for 56 parking spaces. Supporter residents took measures to ensure that all of our responses were genuine as we kept a log of who responded, our form receipt numbers and ensured individuals signed with their email addresses to verify themselves. If the committee would like a copy of this, we'd be more than happy to provide it. It is notable that the only time a tiny vocal minority has managed to demonstrate any opposition in a year of actively working with the council has been where this anonymous, unverifiable system was employed. Whilst resident support numbers have remained consistent, according to this consultation, 100% of all remaining residents who never took part before suddenly strongly objected. The committee may be surprised to be reminded that there are only 56 spaces available for 53 houses. In reality, it is less as six spaces are lost daily to poor parking. A lot has been made of off-street parking availability, but the truth is that only nine new houses have usable off-street parking as the Victorian garages do not accommodate cars, I know as I have one. Residents approach the council for a solution as we find ourselves competing with students' commercial vans and residents from surrounding areas where parking restrictions are tighter. The proposal being discussed is the council's solution, the standard in our area. Indeed, restrictions are currently inconsistent- Indeed, restrictions are currently inconsistently applied, and we are the anomaly in the area with excessively lenient parking. Verifiable responses have shown the strongest support from several households reliant on carers. Carers have dubbed it "a nightmare" parking on the Mount, and I would like to quote from Professor Ian Mills, who was with us tonight. "We pay a significant sum for a permit to park our car, and yet we find space occupied by others who do not live here and pay nothing and prevent visiting carers. My wife is fully disabled from parking." The twenty-one households who support these proposals are varied. There are those of us who are disabled, I myself am disabled, elderly, have young children, work shifts, those whose visitors can't park, and those who support their neighbours. Conversely, the thirty-one purported residents' objections claiming to be from the remaining thirty-one households are curiously uniform, quoting an argument that was debunked in our community, that adopting the standard parking restrictions for the area would shut the Progress Theatre. Residents have held the theatre in high regard as a valuable public community, and many of us are patrons. However, in this instance, the Progress Theatre was disingenuously made a party to drumming up objections based on a falsehood. As a result, it is notable that no evidence has been produced to back up the outlandish claim. Comparatively, residents have polled our community, justified our case, and worked with the council in good faith for a year. The facts that the facts are that the theatre seats ninety-six people, and despite having its own twenty-one space parking lot, expects patrons to park on the Mount when there are fifty-six spaces for fifty-three houses. This can only be achieved one way, by rampant illegal parking outside of marked bays. The theatre was unaware that parking was available for free at the university after five P M, that there is metered parking on Elmhurst Road, Sintra Avenue and Allcroft Road, all within minutes' walk. That when this was raised, the theatre distanced themselves from a leaflet they were central to, noting in their defence, and I quote, "it was produced by one resident." Claims have been made on their behalf that the theatre is a significant proportion of their audience, are vulnerable and elderly or disabled, but this is verifiably false. The theatre only has one wheelchair-accessible seat, which is usually released to the general public, and one disabled parking space, which is often used by non-blue badge holders, all left empty. If it was true that the theatre's patrons were elderly or disabled, the theatre would have provisions in place to prioritise its parking, but it does not, because it is untrue. Their typical audience is easily observable to be young, the demographic most likely to be to be able-bodied. Conversely, it is demonstrably true that elderly and disabled residents will continue to suffer. Even if people were generously sympathetic to the claims made on behalf of the theatre, they host fifty-eight shows in their ten-month schedule, when residents are impacted three hundred and sixty-five days of the year. Our Labour councillors have spoken to the theatre, attempting to address their concerns, and the theatre has been encouraged to develop a sustainable transport policy, as they admit they have none. Encouraging the theatre to expect the majority of its patrons to drive and use the Mount Conservation Area.
Sorry, I have to stop you there. Your time's up. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Can I just stay there for a minute? Do you have councillors have any questions you want to ask? Okay, could I ask you to take a seat, please? Thank you for coming in. Can I have the next speaker, please? Julia Moore wants to speak. Okay, councillor Adele, you want to come in?
Thank you, Chair. I think it might be helpful at this point to talk a little bit about the Traffic Management Subcommittee and how we usually make decisions. This isn't a political committee, isn't an adversarial committee. We try and make decisions through consensus. Sometimes proposals, but proposals aren't developed by the council. I've read all of the, I made it one hundred, one thousand one hundred and twenty-six comments, but somewhere else it said one, one, two, one, one. Certainly felt like a lot of comments, and I have read them all. And there's a lot, certainly in the objections, about the council imposing things. And I just wanted to make clear the council don't impose things. Requests come in from residents, requests come in from ward councillors, and then they're considered, and we try and reach a consensus position. I had a parking scheme in my own ward that took, I think it was four years overall, because we kept coming up, and then it wasn't quite right, and we'd go back again and go round again. And what it feels like happening here is there are two very different opinions, and all the communication is coming into this committee, but it doesn't seem to have happened a great deal across. And I don't see a consensus here about how, both sides have got really valid concerns. I've got sympathy for both concerns, and also I agree with a lot of the things that were said in the support and the objections. Unless there is anyone who lived on the Mount before nineteen forty-six, everyone did move in with the theatre already there. And I should declare a slight interest. I did a drama green. I worked in theatre in my twenties. So obviously, I'm sort of tended towards wanting to support a theatre. But there were some really good points about alternative parking arrangements that theatre could promote. And I was really disappointed when I went to the theatre's website. Given that this has been going on now, I think you all said it's a year it's been going on for, the theatre's website doesn't ask people to avoid driving to the theatre, and it doesn't promote active travel, and it actively encourages people to park on the Mount. And I don't think that's particularly neighbourly, when they know that that's causing distress to some residents. And I'd love to see the theatre saying to their patrons, "Please don't park there. Please go to Sintra Avenue. Please go to somewhere else." I think there's more that could have been done. I don't think it should have come to the decision point now, when those options haven't been explored. I don't think it's it's fair to force the theatre to lose the to lose the Mount option before that's been tried, without the jeopardy that is certainly being described in the meeting. So this doesn't feel like a traffic management sub proposal to me at the moment, because what we usually expect is that the ward, we defer to the ward councillors, and they say to us, "This is the best fit for the residents." And I don't think either propose agreeing or disagreeing this is best fit for residents, because people are clearly very upset, people are clearly very worried, and a group of people is going to be left that way, whatever decision is made. If that's helpful, explain the committee.
Thank you, councillor Adele. Councillor Lewis, Terry, do you want to just?
Thank you, Chair. Actually, councillor Barnet Ward and I agree completely, and I was going to say some similar things. And and just for people, you know, the same thing, really. I've got a road in my ward that, you know, one end of the road absolutely wants residents' parking, and then the moment that's raised, the other end of the of the road absolutely don't want it. And I have never, in my, I mean, I think I did this as a ward councillor when I was first elected back in twenty twelve, so maybe twenty thirteen. And I've been approached by different people there on and off over a number of years, and to this day, I cannot get a consensus of residents to agree. And I've walked away and said to them, "It's just not possible to get an agreement." Now, we tend to go on a consensus, and sometimes we go on the, you know, when there isn't controversy, and there isn't neighbours falling out with each other potentially, although I'm pleased to hear that perhaps you do still get on. But, you know, if there is a sort of overwhelming majority, one way or the other, we'd be inclined to do that. But usually, on the basis of seeking the views of local councillors about it. But in this case, I simply went on the one hand and on the other. So on the one hand, the scheme is unusual in that it's a shorter timeframe than often there is. My understanding is Sintra close, I think it is opposite, has a more recent scheme, and there's been some changes there that might have brought some pressure to bear, and that might be affecting it. Who, you know, it's not really clear. What is clear is the issue about Progress Theatre feels not feels very challenging. We have declared a climate emergency. We are looking at sustainable transport issues. We definitely say all those things, and yet here we have a local, you know, a held precious. I mean, I should declare an interest that once upon a time, when I was at school, I was invited to join the theatre. But I declined. I wish I hadn't. Maybe I'd be an actor by now. Who knows? I know. So my point is, is I think that that becomes a bit of a distraction. It feels like there are real alternatives for the theatre to direct its patrons to available parking spaces elsewhere, that would leave some space and or whatever for people. And you can do drop-offs. If you're somebody who's got an elderly relative, friend, whatever, that you'd like to take to the theatre, you can drop them off and go and park somewhere else. It's mostly on the flat, although it's hills everywhere. The parking that Elmhurst, the university, Sintra, whatever, later on in the day, that could be available, is easily accessible. So I find myself in this terrible dilemma about it, you know, because it's such a shame that you all feel this emotionally about it when it's parking. I mean, you know, it's really quite challenging, isn't it? So I have flip-flopped. I've been inclined to think that people who live there pay for their residents' parking now. That is true. We've had to introduce charges. Probably our first among equals in that sense, it says, "We want to sort of have a protected right, and extending the scheme sounds like a good idea." But when so many residents say, "No, we don't want it," who am I to argue with that as well? So you've left us with a complete dilemma, even though sometimes more objections or more in support helps us to make that decision. I feel that you've left us in a really almost impossible position tonight. And I'll just say that's where I'm at at the moment, and I'd need to hear some more before I could make a decision.
Thank you, councillor Terry. I have an indication from councillor Mitchell.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to both sides who've spoken. Completely concur with my colleagues on the other side. Consensus is best for everyone. And I appreciate what councillor Page said about the the different categories, not being weighted in any particular way in favour of one view or another. But we have had concerns around the results from both sides in that, on the opponent's side, genuine concerns that genuine contributions from residents weren't properly included or identified without prior knowledge. And on the other side, we have genuine concern, what appear to be genuine concerns over the possibility for engineering on an anonymous basis. So on that, I would say, and as a relatively junior member of the committee, I defer to the experience of those councillors who've been on this far longer than I. But I would be prepared to move a motion to defer tonight, so that perhaps instruct officers to rerun the exercise with those categorisations made quite clear. And then we can we can assess them with a, basically, I would be uncomfortable voting to reject or approve on the basis of nearly nine hundred objections, of which of whom I don't know who they are or where they've come from, having heard concerns on both sides. Whereas if it were to be deferred, rerun with those categorisations clearly stated for all participants, then perhaps we may get a truer, more accurate picture, which will enable us to come to our decision.
Thank you, councillor Mitchell. Councillor Ling has indicated.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the speakers tonight. I'm probably not going to be as scientific as Paul was with his data. But it goes back to January. We had a South East Labour conference, and it's quite customary for other constituencies to come down with their activists, and we go out on a on a local canvass. And it just so happened that one of the the places that we chose the canvass on that particular Sunday was the Mount. And we have a little pep talk with with our guests, and they say, "What are the local issues?" I was the only councillor, because the others never turned up that day. And they asked me, and I've got. Oh, in church, yeah, sorry. And to be honest, I'm a Whitley councillor, so I didn't know, you know, what the major issues were. So I said, just without giving away canvassing secrets, just stick to the to the punchline sort of thing. Anyway, after knocking on the first door, I think it was Mr Singleton White, what, yeah? I certainly found out what the issues were. So anyway, we then, I then give a little pep talk to the Beckenfield comrades. You say comrades now, can we? Colleagues? And we did it. We we basically popped it into conversation. And I have to say, it was pretty balanced. So that's just a little anecdote from from where, from from my perspective back then. So I agree with my colleagues. I think it's right to defer, and we can have a little bit of negotiation, a bit of to-ing and fro-ing, and come to some sort of arrangement, I think.
Thank you, councillor Ling. Councillor Tony Page?
Chair, I'm grateful for the colleagues who have spoken, and picking up on what councillor Mitchell and councillor Ling said, I would be, and indeed everybody else, I would be unhappy about proceeding with agreeing the changes on the basis of the responses that we've seen to date. And I think there's a job of work to be done by elected members in the area. Where I would slightly depart from councillor Mitchell's suggestion, which I'm going to make formally about deferring consideration of of this item, is that I think there's a role here for local members to undertake. And I'm conscious that that we've got elections coming up. But either way, on the fifth of May, we will know who the three new members are for the the Redlands Ward. And I believe that they should be tasked with the challenge of bringing together not only or trying to secure a consensus amongst local residents, but also establishing a dialogue with Progress, because councillor Adele Barnet Ward has rightly highlighted some changes that could usefully be made on their website to update it. But I think there is also a job of work to be done to discuss the local residents' parking scheme, because councillor Terry is right, and indeed, I think it was Nikki Hayward in her presentation, who referred, I think, to the lenient parking arrangements. And it is a scheme that is very lenient compared with the arrangements that we have across the borough. So there may be changes that could be made, that go some way to addressing the concerns, without also that could take the theatre with them. The theatre don't have a veto over this, but I would make the point to local residents that they have been there for over sixty years. I think there's only one local resident in the Mount who was there before the theatre. So the fact that the theatre is an established part of the local community is something that we need to take on board. And they are an important and valued cultural asset. I know they haven't been quite as active for the last few years, along with all other theatres, but their contribution is not insignificant. And the final point that I would make, and so whilst I'm not charging officers with rerunning a statutory consultation at this stage, because we are, I'm proposing we defer and bring this back to the June committee, when we could either then take a decision to say no, or we can agree the changes, or we can consider adding to the list for future work some tweaking of the scheme that isn't the basis of the current consultations. And that leads me to the point, and colleagues should refer to the request that's on our future request list on page one hundred and ninety-seven. Bloody pagination wasn't so difficult, if you bear with me. Page one hundred and ninety-seven contains the request from the Lower Mount to be added to the existing fifteen R scheme. And it's number eight on page one nine seven, "Request for properties twenty-seven to thirty-five, the Mount to be added to the nearby permit zone, and additional restrictions installed on Lower Mount." So I'm suggesting that in deferring the current proposals, we also ask the ward councillors to take on board that request as part of the discussions with local residents. So, Chair, can I propose that we therefore defer consideration on this item until June, that it comes back to June, that the newly-elected councillors, and I would specifically request this be minuted, be asked to facilitate discussions between and with residents and the theatre, and that an opportunity therefore be afforded to them to address, not necessarily all three, the subcommittee, if they're not members, in June. And I think I think I've picked up the point. So I was just going to say, we can even give you a date for the June meeting, which I think is the fourteenth of of June. And that would then be the fifteenth of June. And we would then take a a decision on that. I should also, I think Mr Penman will correct me if I'm not wrong, this will delay the sealing of the traffic regulation order until after that June meeting. It won't prevent officers continuing with the work on the schemes that we deal with this evening, but the sealing of the order will follow the meeting in June. But perhaps Mr Penman could confirm that, but I would propose that deferment, Chair.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. As you as you correctly refer, and it's in.
Yes, thank you. As you correctly refer, and it's also covered in item 4.5, all of the schemes on the waiting restriction review were advertised under one order. So until a decision is made either way on every item, we can't proceed with further development on any individual item.
Thank you. That's clear. Before we move to the... Councillor Cornell, you indicate.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you to the speakers. Like everyone else, I'm one way then the other on this proposal. I'll not take up too much time, because I find myself in the unusual position of supporting what councillor Page said in the main. I think there is work there, where perhaps officers or the local councillors work with the theatre to see if they can address the parking issue at a more informal level, perhaps. The only thing I perhaps am a little concerned about is councillor Page instructing what the three new Conservative councillors will be doing. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Whittemore, you, before I move, please. Councillor Whittemore?
Thank you, Chair. I'd certainly like to thank all the residents who came and spoke, and everybody who's contacted me, and the huge number of people that participated in the consultation. I think, looking through the responses myself, particularly those that had identified as being Westons, it certainly isn't clear one way or the other. I certainly, at the moment, feel that we shouldn't do it. So I guess deferring is the same as not doing it. My question to officers would be, what could we actually do to change it? Because I don't want to defer it and then just come back to the same scheme. So is it... I think it's possible you can reduce restrictions, but not increase them. Is that correct?
Councillors, change.
Thank you. Sadly, it's not quite as straightforward as that. It's... I forget the exact wording, and I'd need to get legal advice. But it would be any significant change that would influence the way that people might respond to the consultation. So if we were to make a change that might influence that, and I think on the volume of responses today, I can probably safely say what legal advice I would have on the basis of any change that we've probably made, they would probably be recommending that it would need to go out to consultation again, and that we couldn't make that change in the results and order.
Thank you, James. Councillor? You, Chair. Right. I don't see any more speakers' indications. So as Chair, I would see in a strong reason what we need to defer this and take it to June, and some more works needs being done from the councillors themselves, and also I would ask officers to get involved as well. And I would like to thank everyone who came in today to speak on this. And we've heard you, councillor. Thank you. You can stay for the rest of the meeting. Yep, so, okay. I thought there was a strong sense of it, but, yep. Is everybody in agreement with this? Put your hands up, please. Agreed. Okay, defer till June. Thank you. That being noted. Thank you. So I'll move back to the first item in the... Back to the agenda appendix one. Yep, page 19.
Chair, can we make sure that we call the page numbers out? When we do, when we do. Can we make sure that we call the page numbers out when we're going through? Thank you.
Page 19, we're on Wapley Street. Right, waiting restrictions, that's in our Abbey Wood. So we're going to go ahead with this. 84 York Road, which is in Abbey Wood, councillor Page.
Chair, can I... I was never particularly happy with this proposal, and I would propose that we don't agree the request. Yeah, I'm proposing we reject the request.
On York Road?
Yeah.
Okay. Committee agree with that? All right. And we have the next request, we see double yellow lines, Foxgrove Gardens.
Yeah, agreed. Yeah, happy with that.
You agree with that? Yes? So we'll take that forward. And page 25 is Cranbury Road in battle.
Could we ask Stuart, have your meeting outside?
Yeah, fine. Cranbury Road?
Yeah, I support that.
Yes, for that? Yes, all right. And the next item I have is Harren Island, which is in Cawisham. Waiting restrictions to install on Corner Milford Road.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, we went round, spoke to all the residents last weekend on this one. We've also had communications from the Residents' Association, and they're all in favour. There is an objection here, but the residents are very clearly in favour of this one.
Yes, everybody agreed with that? Yes? All right. And the next is Roof Isaac Road. Reduce the length of double yellow lines, which is in Cawisham as well.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Members will remember, we've seen this one before. I want to thank officers for their help with this one in responding to residents' concerns. We have one resident who's still not completely happy and would like the double yellow lines to be shorter. I've had a very helpful conversation with Mr Penman before the meeting that I will relay to the resident about the reasoning for that. It's... We're confident that there is still a problem that will be solved by the additional double yellow lines. So I think we should approve this, whilst noting that there is a resident who isn't keen.
Thank you, councillor. So committee agree with that one? Yes? Okay, fine. And then we have Star Road as well, in Cawisham. Addition, double yellow lines in Star Road. Councillor Del?
Sorry, Chair, I'd like to point out, two of the support, in fact, two very fulsome supports for this one, got attached to a Whitley scheme on page... What page is it? 162?
Page 162.
Yeah. Yeah, so items two and three on page 62 are two very detailed supporting comments for this. And I'll also point out, the objection is concern about parking. We've got later in the agenda a proposal for a residents' parking zone here. They do get overspill from the nearby parking zone. So I think it's clear that we should move forward with this one.
Okay, agreed. Yeah. Right. And then we have Staverton Road, which is in Whitley, which is one objection about waiting restriction. Yeah, agreed. All right. Wentworth Avenue, which has double yellow lines on junction of Wentworth Avenue, Whitley Wood Road. We have Whitley councillor, one support. Yeah, sorry, church. Right. Winton Road, we have five objections, one for support. This is the request adding waiting restriction on north of Winton.
Chair, can we ask James to clarify? There are claims here that the advert didn't relate, or what went up on the lamppost didn't relate to what was advertised, and there's clearly confusion amongst the people that have objected. So has there been some mistake? There's clearly some people who are well confused.
No, thank you, councillor Page. Yes, colleagues have briefed me on this. Because of the relative lack of addresses and trying to describe this on a legal order, that the plan, the order are correct, and it was using as reference points the houses on the opposite side, so it's referencing opposite. But we'd only propose, well, in 99% of cases, we'd only propose putting restrictions on the inside of a bend, not on the outside, because that, in doing so, improves the visibility through the corner.
Okay. Right. Is the committee happy with that? Is that...?
I think that addresses some of the objections who think, who thought it was going outside the houses. So on that basis, I would be happy with this proceeding.
See it, councillor Terry? Okay, can we take... Mr Penman, take those notes, and is for the support, take this forward?
Yeah.
Okay. Right. The next one we have is Lindhurst Road, portable vehicle parking. We have seven objections, 11 for support.
Yeah, Chair, so if we look at the support number five and 10, I think that got recorded incorrectly. That should be for a different area. So I request officer to amend that. Secondly, well, whilst I agree with this, but there's... I went there around and spoken to residents, but the worst thing is, despite being double yellow lines, the residents are parking on top of the footpath. So it's not been effective. I'm just trying to bring a larger point here to the discussion. I know we can't enforce that, but at the same time, we're trying to paint this with double yellow lines, which is ineffective anyways. So it's catch 22 there. So somehow we need to figure out how to resolve that. And it's going to get messier with the new flats coming up. At the same time, it's the early centre with children. I've seen kids running around, you know. But it's not working, to be honest, bluntly honest, putting double yellow lines there. So we need to rethink, find an alternative to see how that can be resolved. So, you know, I can agree, say yes, but it's not going to work, because literally 24/7 I see double yellow lines, but cars, vans, trucks being parked on top of the footpath. So, yeah.
I have indication from Ricky Duvin, councillor Ricky Duvin?
No, no, sorry, I'm fine.
Sorry.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'd just like to make the point that the residents of the flats at the moment are going to find it very difficult to find anywhere to park if there are yellow lines put down along the little road that goes down to the nursery. Has anyone actually suggested to them where they should be able to park if these lines go ahead?
Anybody else? So what are we going for?
I think we need to find some parking spaces or figure out, and then have further consultation there, rather than just putting double yellow line, or...
But Chair, we either approve or we don't this proposal. What are you proposing?
Well, whilst I agree, but we also need to look at the larger context with the flats being there, because it's going to get messier. I agree with the proposal, but we also need to re-look at other solutions.
James, could you... Is there any...
Yeah, it's a difficult one. I do understand the pressures there. I mean, the double yellow lines are there as a deterrent. It is quite a narrow road. Yeah, I do understand. It's... You can still load and unload. So dropping kids off, you can still do that legally on double yellow lines. But a loading ban creates even more problems elsewhere for that elsewhere. But in terms of finding alternative spaces for residents, sadly, we've kind of got what we've got in terms of the highway layout. So it's going to be very difficult to find that. Unless something like a permit scheme, the area believes that that would help in reducing overall parking levels. That's really the only other tool we've got in our arsenal, which may or may not be desirable. But this is about trying to clear up that area to parking on what is quite a narrow street leading up to the early year centre. So I guess the decision for tonight, as the Chair said, is whether or not these go in. But the only way to take it up a step would be a loading ban, but it's the impact that that would have.
Right. Councillor, are you happy with it to go ahead?
Yeah, I'm happy to go ahead.
Okay, everybody is clear. Do you want that? Okay, yes. And can we have... The next one is Noel Close, which is an extension of double yellow lines in Noel Close. There's seven support for it, yeah? So it's all for support for that one. Right. The next one we have is Brown Road, which is waiting restriction, which is a minstrel.
Yes, thank you, Chair. And all councillors fully support these measures. Over a number of years, we've been in liaison with the school and local residents over the safety changes for that road, particularly with a view to the crossing between the infant school and the junior school. So there's a raised platform there, but these additional markings, well, I believe, make it safer for everyone concerned, particularly at the... So I say some of the busier times of the day for traffic through the area. So we're fully in support of this, and it's good work.
So committee agreement with that one? Yeah, okay. Next we have is St Saviour's Road, which is in Insturgen. Would you ever support that?
Yes, Chair. I mean, I just want to say, this is very welcome, and I know that the sightlines will be much improved here. I think just a general comment to Mr Penman, really, and to the network team, is that increasingly, there are vans that are finding these sorts of spaces, you know, where they're just not right in front of houses, but they're parking up there because there's no restrictions. But it's a van parking issue in this town is becoming a real, is a problem. And I'm not having a go at the van drivers. They've got livelihoods. They need to have access to them. But there does seem to me, building up, you know, as I've been out and about and over a couple of years now, a real issue about where do vans park and what the problems are for them. And they go searching for spaces. It can be quite a long way away from where they're actually living sometimes. And I don't know what the answer is, other than talking to some of the businesses whose labels are on the side of some of these vans, who I think ought to be making better provision and talking to their drivers about them. But that's my bugbear. I'm very pleased and hope, and glad to support this proposal. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Terry. Next one we have is thus for yes for support there. Hamsdale Close, which has parking issues occurring from drop-off, 21 objections on that one. So we're going to... We don't proceed with this one? Committee agree with this? Yeah? It's a strong no there, yeah? Right, fine. And then we have Bulmush Road, request for restriction to protect entrance at school, Bulmush Road, junction of Hamilton Road. One in support, one objection.
Yeah, the Park Court councillors are keen on this going ahead.
Yeah, support. Okay, fine. Committee agree with that? Okay, all right. Then Crescent Road, we have two objections, one support. That is first.
The Park Court councillors also support this, so...
Yeah, support that as well? Yes, okay. Committee agree with that one? Yeah. We have St Peters Road, request for loading ban.
So, yeah, on behalf of the Park Court councillors, can I propose that we make a slight change to this? So outside of the Forget Me Not shop, which is on the north side, just to leave the existing... So don't do that, but leave the existing double yellow lines that are there, and just do the rest of the changes.
Councillor James? Oh, sorry. What are you proposing?
So on the outside of the Forget Me Not shop... So on the outside of the forget me not shop, which is. Let me just find it. It's on, on the north side of St Peters Road, next to Brighton Road. So the. No, it's the other side, sorry, so it's the west. Yeah. So just that, that part there that goes around that corner is, is removed.
Mr Pen.
Sorry, councillor Whitton, I did receive an email from, from your colleague earlier, but just to clarify, there was, and then I can try and relate and describe to, to the committee. So there's an area shaded in pink and was it that that bit isn't dropped, but the rest remain? Excellent, thank you. In that case, just to, to help describe this, my understanding is that all councillors would like to proceed with the, the, the changes on, on, along St Peters Road, the south side, the bit, as you look into the plan, that's the, the top right section, but the top left, so the bit that wraps around from Brighton Road for not, for 13 metres and around for 23 metres heading to the left, that that gets removed.
So the bit that's marked 23 metres and 13 metres.
Yes.
Yeah, my understanding.
Because the, there's a florist there, number nine, and they would struggle with their deliveries. No, no, they don't need all of that, but I think it's easier to just remove that part rather than try and just do part of it.
Chair, that would then leave the existing red route, no stopping at any time restriction.
Yes.
But that allows for unloading, does it?
I think the, I think the underlying restriction, the red route stops as it comes into St Peters Road. So, so I believe it's just, you, my understanding is, is that they, they don't want the, on top of the existing double yellow lines, members in the ward don't want the loading ban added to that section, but they do for the remainder. Sorry, I hope that's.
Exactly, yes, so where is black now is double yellows at the moment.
Ah, that's what we should, right, okay.
Are we clear with that?
I don't have a problem with that.
No problems there, yeah. All support for that? Okay, fine. Mr Pen, yeah, sorted, yeah, okay. So I'll move on to the next one, Comber Park Avenue, petitioners request changes to be shared, two objection, three in support, support for that? Councillor Whitton?
Yes.
Yep. Committee agree with that? Yeah, okay, thank you. Then we have Surly Row, which is, so we will, which has two objections, three in support. Caversham councillor? Okay. Sorry. Yeah, you any support for that? Yeah, agreed, okay, fine. Amount we have, we already done. So we'll move on to the page 152. Right. Right, Shaw Head Close, restrictions for that, councillor?
Yeah, can I ask, I mean, I'm, I'm asking Mr Penman to do my job for me really. I can't remember why this came now, to be honest with you. Yeah, yeah, there's not a thousand objections, but there's certainly seven. And I'm not sure about this, but I'm sure it's there for a reason because I think it's the gates, isn't it? It's stop people parking by the gates in the, in the one gated community we got in Southcote. I think that's what it is. Don't have to answer it, James.
James Pen, Mr James Pen, you want to come?
Thank you, I'm just trying to, I haven't quite committed to memory all of the requests, but, but my, I'm sorry.
I know, I know.
But my, my understanding is, is around access and looking at the, the layout of the roads, that was, it, it looks like a, it looks like a turning head. So I'd suggest if you've got vehicles parked in there, it would make turning difficult. So, so from accessibility, looking at the road layout and a turning manoeuvre, it protects one of those turning arms from, from parking.
But, you know, the funny thing is, is there's seven objections. I'll take it off. But I'll come back to you, James, if there's a problem.
Councillors, calm down. Next, Albert Road, request for double yellow lines, approval, one objection, one support.
Yes, I'm happy for this to go ahead. This is an issue that is raised quite regularly.
Okay, fine, thank you. Everybody in agreement with that one? And then we have Callington Road, we have.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. It was only one objection, but it was quite detailed and I was quite concerned that the school hadn't made a response. So anyway, I tried to get hold of the business manager today. She was working from home, couldn't get hold of her. Eventually liaised with the school and headmaster, Mr Nathan Butler-Broad, is fully in favour of this. So I'm happy to go ahead. It's only a drop off and a pick up point. They were going to use it during Covid and then they've extended it, but he's happy for it to go ahead.
Agreed, committee agree with that? We go forward. And then we have Chadford Road, two support.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Yeah, there's no objection, support, yeah? Go ahead with that, yeah? It's all support, what I see on that. And Copenhagen Close, we have three in support.
Yes, to agree.
Committee agree with that as well? And then we have is Forest Dean. Forest Dean, W L lines.
I just want to, there's a query I've got because I've asked a lot of people. Actually shows a bus stop on there, yeah? Councillor Page is the bus expert. Do you recognise that bus stop? Because as far as I'm concerned, it's not used anymore.
So whilst I took a bus down there.
Yeah, I think that's.
But I think you're right, yeah.
It's gone kaput. Like Monty Python.
But we're not asked, we're not asked to do anything with the bus stop, but.
No, but I'm just saying it's still on the map, it needs to.
Yeah.
Because the bus stop's still up, it's actually updated, you know.
Okay, other than that, you're for support, yeah? Okay, right, we'll move on. Longbar Lane, we have one objection and basically, I'm sorry, happy with the support that? Yeah? All right, and then we have. Sorry, there we are. Right, we have the next waiting restriction, appendix two, Norcott Road. This is a reduction of parking bay allowing relocate the bus stop.
Yeah, Chair.
Forty four objections and.
Yeah, that's, that's my ward, so. Yeah.
Yeah, we have forty four objections and, yeah, no. Yeah, yeah, I'm just going, James, yeah, can you introduce that please?
Thank you, yes, sorry, I think we've, we've also had a lot of discussions since my initial introduction. So this, this proposal wasn't part of the waiting restriction review. It was a SIL scheme where we needed to relocate a bus stop to get this visibility we needed for a new zebra crossing. And that did, that would involve reducing the parking, the length of parking bay as, as indicated. However, because of the, the tight turnaround between January, March meetings, it was advertised in with the waiting restriction review order because that was the only way that we were going to get it done in time for this meeting. So just for the avoidance of doubt, it's in the same T R O. We separated it as a different appendix. So we're just seeking a decision on whether or not the, the subcommittee agree to that change.
Right, thank you, James, councillor Singh?
So clearly there are 44 objections to it and the reason is obviously the parking bay, which is getting reduced. What I recommend or suggest is there's a red route. If anything needs to be reduced, it's the red route itself next to the parking bay. If that can be extended, then perhaps residents would be able to agree. Because parking is a big challenge there. Residents were completely annoyed and frustrated when the red route was put, put in there to, to speed up the bus timing, which was just speed up by one minute. So, you know, that doesn't make it sense. So if we can look at increasing the parking bay or keeping to an existing limit by reducing the red route, then perhaps we can, you know, go back to the residents and, you know, communicate and find, find a way around.
Councillor Page?
It's good to hear that the party one minute that supports public transport, the next moment comes forward with the proposal to undermine it. But perhaps councillor Singh might want to get a separate tutorial on the benefits of the red route across town. I would like to propose, Chair, that we defer this item to allow officers to investigate delivering the zebra crossing by moving it closer to Blundles Road, which would allow the bus stop to be potentially located outside 93 to 95, thereby not requiring any use of the layby or any loss of spaces. 93, 95 have a brick wall, there's the space for bus stop between 93 and 95. They've both got drives by the side and would be a more suitable location altogether. And if at all possible, it would then deliver the new zebra crossing, which is needed. It is impossible for a man or woman with a buggy to cross safely because the refuge isn't wide enough. And therefore a zebra crossing would deliver the safety of crossing at a busy and, and desired point. So Chair, I would propose, I don't know whether Mr Penman is able to clarify the, whether we would be delegating for a further statutory consultation after the work had been done. But I understand that moving the crossing, is it westwards? Yeah, it would be westwards, towards Blundles Road offers the opportunity to deliver this crossing, move the bus stop and not lose the spaces.
Okay, thank you.
Could Mr Penman clarify that?
Yeah.
Mr Pen?
Yeah, thank you councillor Page and, and thank you for the comments that have been made. So, yes, there are a couple of options here and one is, well, if, if the committee are not, are not minded to agree to implementing the change of the parking bay, it does make the crossing in its current location unfeasible. So we do have the option where we can investigate moving that crossing. And as councillor Page has said, moving it to a point where we wouldn't need to have the bus stop in that bay if that was possible. And we can look at other options as well. I think there are challenges to extending the bay the other side because there are lots of dropped curbs that then start, which mean you're going to be limiting the amount of on-street parking that you actually get because of driveway access. So we'd look at options, but yeah, if, if the subcommittee would agree, just to potentially avoid further delay with this, this scheme implementation, that in consultation with all councillors and the lead councillor and Chair of the Subcommittee, that we can look at other options and if we find something that is feasible, that we can conduct a consultation on that as required and bring that back to the committee for another decision. If, if that would be agreeable to the subcommittee, it would mean that we can proceed with, with further development on the scheme.
Thank you, Mr Pen. Before we take any decision, councillor Duvine, councillor Singh, I'll come back to you in a minute. Councillor Duvine, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. I'm happy to support councillor Page's suggestion of moving the crossing closer to Blundles Road. I think the real issue with, with the proposal as written here is that the people living in houses 101 to 107 or whatever it is, really have a, a bus that run out outside their front door, outside their living room window too. And I don't think that they actually appreciate that. As well as the, the parking, losing the parking bay, you've got those houses there that simply don't have driveways or possibility of implementing a driveway. But if we can move the, the bus stop closer to Blundles Road and, sorry, the crossing closer to Blundles Road and the bus stop to outside 93, 95, I think that might be more, more acceptable to people, definitely.
Thank you, councillor Duvine. Councillor Singh?
Yeah, just, just, yeah, I agree to defer this. Only if we move the zebra crossing further towards inverse, then we're moving away from the junction. That's where people, you know, crossing and that, that's one consideration perhaps the officers needs to make, how far away you want it away from the, from the roundabout because that's, that's where people need access. So yeah, definitely agree to defer this.
Yeah, okay, we'll defer this and James, you've got all the comments and everything, yeah? And we'll take it up for the next. Everybody agree with that?
Yeah, can we just make it clear though, the red route is not up for, the red route stays. I don't want councillor Singh running off and, sorry? Well, yeah, well, yes.
Well, we're all electioneering, including yourself.
Yeah, gentlemen, please, yeah.
Anyway, you'll have more time after May to talk to the local residents.
I'm sure you'll accompany me.
As taken forward, agreed, yeah? Can we move to appendix three, waiting restriction programme for 2022 A?
Thank you, Chair. So just quickly, appendix three, so these are requests that we've received for potential inclusion on the next waiting restriction review programme. There are a few that have got some officer comments on as well. We're just asking the Subcommittee whether or not these get put into the programme for investigation. Thank you.
Thank you. As usual, I'm going to take this ward by ward. So the first one that we have is in Bridge Street, which is an Abbey Ward. You want to agree to that one? Okay, then we have the one in Battle Street, Argyle Street.
Yeah, agreed.
You agree with that one to go? We have three in Caversham, Amisham Road, Branch Avenue.
Thank you, Chair. These are all in the new Caversham ward and are the current Caversham councillors are candidates in that ward. So I think it should just leave it be and whoever represents the ward have to make and make the decision.
Right, thank you councillor Dell. We have three in Church.
Chair, Chair, councillor Barnet Ward's confused, we're, we're leaving these on, we're not taking them off.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm not, I'm not scrutinising the validity of them because it's, it's about to be someone else's responsibility rather than mine.
But Chair, we are make, can I make clear to all colleagues, we're not agreeing anything other than further investigation. So the.
Okay, clear with that? Right, well, next we have three in Churchward, Barnesdale, request for double yellow line, Brigham, agree for that? Yes. Two in Case Grove, Walton Road, Vaughan Avenue. Two in Kentwood, Ammer Road. One in Maple Durham, Findwood Drive. Four in Minster.
So Chair, on the Minster ones, so there's an officer comment and I think we agree that that has been resolved by reinstating the yellow lines, it seems to be officer comment. Could I just ask Mr Penman just to check on the St Saviour's Road one? Because I think it's the same as the scheme that we've just approved, that on page 50, with the lines going round to the top. I think they may have become in, under described slightly differently, but I think the outcome is the same. So I'd ask you to check it, but I think there can be no other thing that could be done and we've agreed it. So you could take it off this list essentially. And then we do agree that of course, there's a lot of work going on around the development at Wensley Road. So we agree with the officer comment there as well.
Okay, thank you councillor Terry. James, you've got that, okay, fine. Next we have is four in Norcott, which is D Rose, Shaftbury Road, Stoneham, agree with those, committee? Yeah? And Park Ward, we have Norris Road, request for councillors.
Yeah, the Park Ward councillors would like to keep this.
Yeah. For that. And then, sorry. And then, sorry.
Well, Chair, I don't know what the current, the, the, we, we do not introduce unilateral variations to an area scheme for a single road. So you either.
Maybe it could be those three little roads there.
Sorry?
Maybe it could be the three little roads then, but. They, they have got a big problem with, with overflow parking from Wokingham Road. From the shops.
Well, I mean, it's currently eight to late there, isn't it, for to our waiting? For non-permit holders, isn't it? Or is it not? I mean, Chair, if the request is included for, it would have to be for the area. You can't just pick out individual roads and start varying the times. That's not the way the residence parking scheme works.
Are you happy?
Okay, so do we need to come back then with the three?
Well, if you want to add a joining, but even then, it, it, it it's, we, we haven't, we have the, I can't remember what zone this is, but.
James?
Fourteen hour, so you either have fourteen hour, but to start unpicking one or two roads causes a lot of work and a lot of hassle. I think you should come back with this.
Do you want to defer this?
Yeah. I think, I think, yeah, I, I think, I think we should defer this. If Park Ward councillors want to have further discussions about this, but we, 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 we have an area and a zone based approach and that's for a good reason.
Are you happy with that?
There has to be consistency across them.
Okay.
Yeah, you're happy with that, we'll defer it and then bring it back soon, get a bit more clarity on it. Okay. Right, next we have five in Pepard Ward, Henley Road, Pansy Avenue, Rosedale.
Yeah, they all look reasonable to me, so Pepard's happy, agree.
You're happy with those to go ahead, right, fine, thank you. Right, well, because and we have Redlands Ward, that's Devovia, seven in those, Devovia, Donington, Alder泰us, happy with those. I did, and everybody happy to go with the.
All apart from the, the Fox Hill Road, because I think the parking is very restricted in Fox Hill and I think that would be better solved by getting a smaller waste vehicle instead. I think this is purely about the, the bins being emptied. So I'd, I'd like to drop that one, but keep the rest.
Do you want to? Okay, fine. Fox Hill Road, you want to drop that one, okay, fine. James, you go that one, yeah, okay. Next we have three in South Circuit Lane, Hogarth Avenue, councillor Ennis, Silchester Road.
Yeah, briefly, contrary to some of the meetings I've attended recently where officers have taken unfair abuse and criticism, I'd like to apologise to Mr Penman that he did tell us there would be, could be a problem on Silchester Road if we put both W L lines on, and he was correct. We have half the residents have come out with pitchforks. Correctly so, so we'd like to keep it in the review.
Okay.
Thank you very much, and the others can go forward.
Yeah.
It is.
So what, what are you going, go ahead with the Circuit Lane, Hogarth, and you want to drop Silchester Road, yeah?
Yes, please.
Silchester. Keeping it on? Okay. Okay, keep it brief, right, thank you councillor Ennis, that's clear now. Thames Ward, we have two for Chiltern Road and closed, request for councillors.
Thank you, Chair, the two Conservative councillors in Thames Ward are happy for these to go forward.
Thank you. Now, gentlemen, we got, yeah. We got eight in Tyllis.
One of them is actually in Kentwood, Chair, Kenwood Hill is actually in Kenwood Ward.
Okay, right, sorry, Kenwood Ward, yeah.
It's on their side of lights.
Right.
I'm happy for the others to go ahead and not necessarily agree with all of them, but I'm happy to have the investigation done.
Okay, fine, thank you. Agreed, right, fine, thank you. Next we have five in Wickley.
Yeah, happy to go forward, just to say Sycamore Road is in Churchward, other than that, fine, cool.
Thank you councillor Len, and that concludes that one. Right, already agree with that, thank you. We would, we'll move on to items, agenda six, which is residents permit parking, update request for the new scheme. Mr Penman, do you want to?
Thank you, Chair, just to bring back to the committee the updated list of requests that we've received for resident permit parking. Subcommittee will note in there that we've, we've referenced that we'd, we'd kind of use the list as, as a way of sort of maybe generating comments and trying to encourage people to engage and then perhaps growing schemes organically through that process, which hasn't quite materialised. But we have had a really unprecedented couple of years. So the suggestion by officers at the moment is, is there's no specific actions on there, but we'll continue to engage with all councillors. Some of that started already and thank you very much for the feedback that we've had so far. And to just try and gauge whether there is still demand for this in these areas, we've put a bit more context in there around the number of requests that we've had. And just to try and, and get a feel for, for whether we should be taking these to the next, to the next stage. So just asking the subcommittee to, to acknowledge the list, if they've got comments or whether there are any schemes that they'd like to agree to remove at this point, thank you.
Thank you, James, councillor Liz Terry, you indicate.
Thank you, Chair, just to make business, just in, in reference to Minster, I think we did pass this on, but to be clear, we'd like to retain the Downshire Square on the list. We think it's worth us having further discussions. But we are satisfied that Carsdale Close won't progress and so we'd like to take that off, thank you, Chair.
So I'm, I'm going to go, it's an answer order, okay, don't you lose us? Yeah, councillor Adele.
Thank you, Chair, so for items one and three, the Caversham one, so my approach is the same as, as the previous report. The, I think need to leave them on, probably do further work, they are pre-pandemic schemes. So they haven't been needed to be progressed while traffic levels have been low, but they are picking up now in this area. And so I very much hope that Caversham's new representatives from May will do some work with residents in these areas to pick up whether there is still need or whether there's returned need.
Got that, yeah, okay, then Carsdale Close, we've done that one? Yeah, we've done that one, yeah, then we move on to Norcott, August End, Brock Gardens.
Chair, can I ask, we retain this on the list for the time being for further discussions with, with local members.
Agreed, committee agree, okay, fine. And then we move to Pepard, Kidmo End Road. Continue with this.
Yep, agreed.
Next one is Avian Place in Abbey.
Chair, this, I, I don't know why this is actually on because this has been dealt with by housing. So I would suggest we delete this from.
Remove this, okay, fine, thank you. Next we have is Redlands, Low Mount, we dealt with that one, sorry, yeah. And Norcott, Seven Ways. Committee happy with that one, yeah, go ahead. Leave it on, all right, thank you. We'll move to agenda item seven, which is a request for traffic management measures. Mr James Penman, could you do this?
Thank you, Chair, so this is to update the committee on new requests that we've received for traffic management measures. So this is appendix one or new, new for this report. So appendix one, we're asking subcommittee members to consider the officer comments and whether they should be moved to the principal or, or master list, which is appendix three. And appendix two are items that were previously on the master list that officers are recommending be, be changed. So the majority are schemes that we've recommended for removing from the list and the reasons given. And there is one item on there where we've received a further request that slightly amends another one. But we're just asking members to, to consider the officer comments and make recommendations accordingly, thank you.
Thank you, James, councillor Liz Terry, you indicate.
Thank you, Chair, I don't have anything particular to say on appendix one or two. I'm sure other members may want to raise things in their areas of interest, maybe not just their wards. But on appendix three, it seems to me that the, there's a couple of things on there that I recognise as a Minster councillor that are likely to be fairly recently subject to decisions a policy committee possibly dealt with by SIL money in one way or another, but not yet. And I, I also would say that obviously after May, you'll need to change all the wards and all the new ward councillors will need to review this list. So I think, Mr Penman, you may be asking us a bit too soon, particularly on appendix three. I get the other things that you need, that we could perhaps clarify today. But I think appendix three would be very helpfully reproduced based on the new wards after the elections, before the next meeting. Maybe to go to ward, the new ward councillors and say, these things are on your, on the list, you know, going on till there's some money found. And should I be returned in May, I will adjust it because I'm pretty sure there's two on there that I could remove because they will possibly be dealt with in another way, subject to a policy committee. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Page, you indicate.
Chair, to make business, I would move that we agree or note appendix one, which is really retaining all those schemes unless colleagues have got, I don't propose we need to go through them. With regard to appendix two, those are for either removal or the slight amendment. And again, I would move those formally. With regard to appendix three, councillor Terry is absolutely right. There is a job of work to be done here. I know James winced visibly when reminded of the new war boundaries, but this list does need to be reshaped against the new war boundaries. And I would suggest that, that it's brought back to the June committee for the reasons that councillor Terry has identified. We've also got a bit of cross referencing. Monday we'll see us agreeing hopefully some new SIL schemes, some of which I think are on here. So they can then be lifted off, so you'll have a bit less work, well, you'll have more work in the immediate future with the SIL funded scheme. So there's a bit of a ironing out and to be done, so I would agree with councillor Terry on that.
Thank you councillor Page, I have an indication from councillor Adele.
Thank you, Chair, I was just wondering if James could clarify something for me. On appendix two, item two, which is page two hundred and seven, for anyone who's looking for the page. The boroughwise twenty mile an hour scheme that's been asked, came from the cycle forum. I understand the reasons behind the recommended action, but I just want to clarify what they asked for was not a single boroughwide scheme as, I think the Twenty is Plenty campaign group advocated for doing like a big scheme and then exempting roads. That's not what this ask was, this was just bring them in where you can. So the reason we're taking it out is not because we're reducing ambition, it's because that's actually not precise enough and the precise ones are coming through, I just wanted to clarify, yeah, lovely, thank you.
Thanks councillor Adele, councillor Hackett, you indicate.
Thank you, Chair, just in relation to appendix one item, oh, it's under the page number five. Just a request really that the Oxford Road corridor study get resurrected after the elections because I think we need to, to move forward with that. And I'm, I'm happy to take feedback from the cycle network as well because the new ward boundaries would have even more of the Oxford Road, so keen to get on with that. Should I be re-elected, hit the ground running, thanks.
Anyone, nothing to, so, James, you've got all that, so. Is the committee happy with these to go forward? We agreed, that's right, fine, thank you. Well, then we'll move on to, if everybody's agreement with these to go forward, we'll move on to the next item. The next item, there's no public, there's private confidential, it's application for discretionary parking permits, so.
Yeah, the exclusion, we just moved the exclusion.
Yeah.
So just agree, agree that word.
I propose we exclude the press and public, Chair.
Yeah, I would ask the press, the public to leave the building, there's nobody up here. Turn off your mics please, so it's private confidential.